You all can take your seats, we're gonna begin now. Plenty of seats down here. Good evening, we called the meeting to order at 5:30 before we went into closed session, so we're gonna continue right now. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Education is pleased to recognize an exceptional group of Parkway students who earned All-State Music Honors during the All-State Festival Concert at the Missouri Music Educators Association Conference in late January. In addition, we'll recognize two schools, Central Middle and West Middle, who participated in the Fuel Up to Play 60 program. First, I'd like to invite Mr. Jeff Lackey, Coordinator of Fine Arts, to the podium for the recognition of our music students.
Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Jacob, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty and Ms. Stover. It is with great honor that I introduce 22 extremely talented and dedicated Parkway High School musicians who have achieved the distinction of having been selected to perform in the 2015 Missouri All-State Band Choir or Orchestra. Auditions for these performing positions were serious and competitive. Prior selection for local ensembles was necessary, and auditions at the next level had to be performed perfectly with the technical skill and understanding that made them stand out from hundreds of other students from across the state vying for the same seats. They represented Parkway well in their prospective concerts, which were performed at the Missouri Music Conference before an appreciative audience of music educators and parents. These successful students have demonstrated the very highest level of musical competency and have shown a personal commitment to artistic excellence. I would like to thank their music teachers for motivating, nurturing, and guiding these students into skilled and accomplished musicians. Parents, we would also thank you for your continued support along the way. You must be very proud tonight as we are of our 2015 All-State Music Students. Congratulations to all. I would like to now introduce the All-State Music Students by school and ask that they join their principal and music teachers that are present tonight at the podium to be recognized by the Parkway Board of Education and Dr. Marty. Each group, please remain standing for a photograph with your school as your name is called. Please come forward. From Central High School, Principal Tim McCarthy. And other music staff from Central that are here. Beginning with All-State Choir, we had a student that sang bass as an alternate bass, Christopher Gu, who was not present but was our All-State representative for Central High. All-State Orchestra, before I begin this one, want to give a quick mention. To make "Allstate" as it says was a very difficult process. This particular student not only made Allstate Orchestra but made Allstate Band, and because of the schedule, he was only able to choose one or the other. He chose to perform in the Allstate Orchestra, but we want to make sure he's acknowledged for both, and that would be Joshua Adams. On cello, Amy N. On playing bass was John Paul Byrne. Playing violin, William Crock. On violin, Gajin Kumar. Playing viola, we have Sharonya Kumar. Cello alternate, Sarah Madsen. Playing violin, Anusha Manjunith. Playing viola, Maggie Miller. Playing viola, Julie Nguyen. On cello, Lucas Schenker. And on violin, Jing Hong Zhang. Next, we have North High, Principal Jenny Markort. Also, other music teachers that are here from North if you'll join us. Beginning with Allstate Choir from North, we have Kirby Cooper Alto. Also singing Alto, Amanda Crawford. Singing bass, Leo Demont. Tenor, Sammy Elfenbaum. Tenor, Daniel Ham. We had a student also from North make Allstate Orchestra, but once again, before we introduce him, the student auditioned on two instruments and made Allstate on both instruments. He was auditioned on cello and bass and accomplished both. Once again, you can't play cello and bass at the same time, so we're going to acknowledge him as an Allstate Orchestra, and that would be Ryan Wahidi. Congratulations to our North High, Allstate. Moving on to South High, under Principal Patrice H. We have two students, Abby Benson, who is not able to be with us today, and up here shaking hands is Isabel De Silva, soprano. Next, we have West High, Principal Jeremy Mitchell. Other music teachers from West High. And we had a student also make from West High, Allstate Orchestra, Rebecca Su on cello. Again, congratulations to all of our 2015 Parkway Allstate Music Students. Thank you. As Dr. Keith Marty asked, we had two groups perform at the same convention throughout the week. We had Parkway West High Jazz Choir, and we had Parkway Central Middle Honors Orchestra perform as well.
Next, I'd like to invite Marlene Pfeifer, Director of Food Services, to come down for our next recognition. There she is.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Marty, President Feldman, and Ms. Nicky. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Courtney Corbett, who is with Midwest Dairy. She does a lot of great things here in the district, a great coordinator. She's manager of health and wellness with the Midwest Dairy, working with school districts throughout Eastern and Central Missouri, concentrating mostly on the St. Louis region.
Thank you, thank you, Marlene, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing us to join you tonight. As Marlene mentioned, I do represent Midwest Dairy Council, an affiliate for the National Dairy Council here in Missouri. Just over five years ago, the National Dairy Council and National Football League collaborated to create Fuel Up to Play 60, a student health and wellness program encouraging and empowering the students to make healthy changes in their school. One of those such schools is right here in Parkway Central Middle. And in an effort to enhance the program, business partners have chosen to support Fuel Up to Play 60 with additional funding in addition to the commitment of the America's Dairy Farmers and the National Football League to help enhance those programs. As we mentioned, two Parkway schools are being recognized tonight as recipients for that additional funding, and we're pleased to have representatives here. And it's funding provided through the Gin Youth Foundation, Shop &amp; Save, and Borton and Sons. I'd like to have recognized Parkway Central Middle School, Fuel Up to Play 60 Program Advisor Kathy Wallace, and a student representing her student team Cindy Turner. If she could join, is that the procedure? Okay. And it's kind of unique occasion here tonight, keeping it both in the Parkway family and the Wallace family. We have a representative from Parkway West Middle School, Kevin Wallace, and Crystal and Glor, the program advisors for Parkway West Middle, and their student representative, Lindsay Beeno. I'll provide the Board a detailed information about what each school has done at their school, love to do that. And Shop &amp; Save has provided $6,250 to be shared among these two schools in the effort to expand their Fuel Up to Play 60 program. And we are joined tonight by Paul Robertson, District Manager for Shop &amp; Save. We certainly thank you for the support of Parkway Schools and Shop &amp; Save, and we'll look for many successes in the Parkway Schools in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We're gonna take a brief break, let the students get home to do their schoolwork, and we'll reconvene in just a few minutes.
As hard as we try to make those breaks brief, they seem to get away from us. Anyway, we're going to continue now with communications. One thing that's not on our agenda, but I wanted to mention is we have an upcoming Board of Education election. It will be held on April 7th. There are three candidates that have filed to run for the two spots that are open. My spot and Kim Applebaum's spot will become open. And in order of filing, I filed first. Then we have a candidate who's a North High parent, Cedar Rathod, who will be second on the ballot, and Kim Applebaum will be third on the ballot. There's a candidate form put on by the League of Women Voters on March 26th at 7:00 PM here in this room. 10.01 Calendar of Meetings, the next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 11th, 2015, at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 PM. 10.02 Board Liaison Report.
Citizen Statement.
Did I miss it? I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, we have a citizen statement.
Trying to speed it up.
I'd like to call Michael Burts. Michael, this does not count in your three minutes, but please state your name and your address, and you will receive a reply from us in writing.
I hope so. Michael Burts, 1864 Oxboro Court. So, good evening, Dr. Marty, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Many of you know me from prior engagements with the district, whether it's in a financial or cognitive science capacity. Today, however, I'm here to discuss language. And I'd like to start by offering a little bit of a parable. In 1985, as a sophomore at Cherokee High School in Denver, I was offered a choice. I could participate in the beginning of a new language program, or I could continue with French, which I had been studying for three years already. I chose French and leveraged it into six years of study and AP credit. And by that time, j'étais courant, je pouvais penser en français, et j'ai un accent très non américain. Alors, I've never really used it since, nor the grounding in French literature. In the meantime, through careers in architecture, engineering, and then in finance, winding up as a technology analyst, and now a portfolio manager, I've traveled numerous times to both Europe and Asia for work. The number one tool I did not have that would really have helped me in my investment job, Mandarin Chinese. What was the language program my high school was starting? Chinese. Thirty years ago, my high school had the foresight to start this program. I did not. Today, I stand before the board to challenge you to consider and implement a Mandarin-Chinese program for the Parkway School District. Now, I understand that these are limited resources available. My challenge is not meant to undermine any current offerings, but I would consider the infographic in front of you. Ben? Thank you. China has the second-largest global economy by a fairly wide margin. As I've discovered, their economic and business importance has risen significantly in the last 15 years. And in terms of global speakers, total global speakers, Chinese is number one, again by a pretty wide margin to everything below English. And for those seeking to pursue government service, Chinese is one of four languages in demand. Outside of a small program at Parkway South in Japanese, my understanding is that we only offer French, German, Spanish, and Latin. And while not unimportant, it would seem to me to fulfill Parkway's mission, particularly the part about understanding and responding to challenges in an ever-changing world, that we need to think about the data that's on this graphic. What does that tell us about what Parkway students will face in the future? Do you think that Chinese will be more or less important in the future than it was when we were in school? I think it's incumbent upon the district to seek out and implement this program and to give our students an opportunity to prepare for that world. The Chinese have an expression, guanxi, and loosely translated, that means connections. Relationships and connections are the lifeblood of business. Language is a crucial key to understanding and to those connections. Do not make the mistake that I did 30 years ago and put off that kind of chance for preparation. I would challenge you to do it today. Xie xie.
Thank you. Okay, I can tell you, as a French major, Michael, you did a very good job.
Je ne parlais pas français.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead and we did not approve tonight's agenda. So may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, February 11th, 2015.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Tonight, we have no resolutions, and now we're going to get on to communications. Calendar of Meetings, the next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 11th. I think I read that already. So we're going to go to 10.02 Board Liaison Reports. Yes, Mr. Jacob?
Among many events, let me just talk about two. One was the PTO leadership that we had last Thursday morning. Very well attended, with some dynamic group sessions afterwards. It was just very well attended. It was nice to see that many people there, and then the good discussion that took place on many different subjects, from grading to sports and media and all that kind of stuff. So I really appreciated all those people there and the interest that they had in the various things that were talked about. In addition, Saturday night, I had the opportunity to attend the all-district elementary vocal concert, which was held at Perser. I remember on the boardroom, we would hold it in gymnasiums, and they were fun then, but to hold it in that kind of venue is so special for our young people. Two hundred vocalists together in a choir, fifth graders, and I want you to know, they sang wonderful songs. They just did an incredible job. The guest conductor was marvelous, too. I think it was, was it Mike or Mark Lali? But from, anyway, just supermended, wonderful connection with the kids, and they sang in four languages: English, French, Latin, and Hebrew. And all of them were done excellent, and the only complaint anybody had was just wish it was a little bit longer. But just a great, we can really be proud of our fifth-grade kids, and they'll always remember that experience.
And it was standing remotely. Standing remotely.
Yeah. We need to open up the back.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
I was there.
Okay, nope. Okay, then we're going to go on to upcoming subcommittee meetings. There's HR Finance Subcommittee Meeting on Monday, February 23rd, 3:00 PM at the Administrative Center. We have our Project Parkway Quarterly Meeting on that same night, February 23rd, 7:00 PM. This time, it will be at Central Middle School, and the focus of the meeting will be experiential learning, if I'm not mistaken. Project Parkway Steering Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, February 25th, at 8:30 AM at the Instructional Services Center. 10.04 Board Subcommittee Reports. The TLA Subcommittee met on January 22nd at ISC. Does anybody want to say anything about that?
Do you want to go ahead?
No, you go ahead.
We're always grateful for the opportunity to hear many of the details of programs that are going on at TLA. And this was an example where we heard about the summer program. We also heard from the PE Director regarding student welfare in terms of physical education and all. We thank Lisa for giving us the opportunity to be there. I really didn't prepare these notes tonight, so I don't remember all the details, but the information is very, very valuable to us, and it keeps us informed about what's happening in various functions of TLA, and we appreciate it very much.
Okay, thanks. We're going to move on to action items. Is there anything, oh, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there anything that needs to be pulled, the action or closed?
Madam President, I would like to call item number 11.11 to individual action item, please, the 2016-17 academic calendar.
Great, thank you. We're going to now vote on all of the action items except for 11.11. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion on those carries five zero, and now we'd like to call on Mrs. Amy Joyce to talk about our 16-17 calendar.
Good evening.
Hi.
I can answer any questions that the Board of Education may have about the proposed 16-17 school calendar.
So I wanted to just, first of all, commend the Calendar Committee for their effort. It's my understanding that it's a large group that gets together with a lot of key individuals and groups to pull this together, and I certainly appreciate the time and the effort that's involved in this. And at last board meeting, I did have a number of questions, and they were answered, and for that, I thank you very much. Over the last month, I've been thinking more about the calendar and just doing my own observations, and what I've come up with are just a couple of still concerns that I just wanted to express with a couple of additional follow-up questions and then a request. This particular academic calendar, from my estimation of what we're coming up with and the number of days off, comes to 29.5. The current academic calendar year that we're in right now, we have 25 days off. And then the following calendar year, we're going to end up with 24.5 days off. So going from 2015 to 2016 with 24 and a half days off, to 2016 to 2017 with 29.5 days off is a little concerning to families. And so I guess my concern to just throw out there is, will we be able to have support for families, particularly our working families, who need to find accommodations for these additional five days off that we're not accustomed to in previous years, either through the Y Club or Adventure Club? And I know that sometimes those offerings are made available during holidays. And then the other concern had to do with the flow of the curriculum. As we have shortened weeks with our students, where we have a number of weeks where they're very shortened. So, and in a couple of the months, we're only going about a three-week period of time where we have a full week, and then it's interrupted by a day off, and then we have another short week and a day off. And then we, this particular year, it ended up that we're having an eleven-and-a-half-day winter break, just by virtue of the way that the calendar is falling. And then from there on, between November and December, we have very shortened weeks and not a whole lot of period of time. And then when we go into our winter break, we're ultimately having students out of the classroom 17 and a half days between the weekends and all of the holidays. So all that to say, there's just a little concern of how this is going to affect student achievement and moving their routine, and supporting families to make sure that 29 and a half days is not going to be a detrimental effect to our students. And that the request is that in the future, moving forward with our calendars, that if we see that there is some type of negative effect from having this many days off, that we can rethink the calendar, regroup it, or somehow rearrange how these days are taken.
Okay. I appreciate your comments and your input, and I will take those back to the Calendar Committee when we revisit in the fall. And I will also speak with our Adventure Club and Y Club to see if those additional opportunities to support families during days off will be available. One item that I would like to just indicate is that the number of student contact days has not changed. It's just they're positioned different throughout the calendar year. So we have maintained that same number. So the days off are just spread out within August to May.
Yeah. And it looks like for that particular year, we're going later in May than what we normally do. So we're bumping those five days back into another weekend to May, but it still occurs before the Memorial Day holiday.
Right. And from a curriculum standpoint, one positive aspect of Parkway preparing a calendar a year in advance, it does give teachers time to look at the curriculum and backward design where they want to end up at the end of semesters, so we can make sure that all of the objectives are covered within the trimester. So that is one positive outcome of preparing a calendar a year in advance. But I will take your comments and share those with the Calendar Committee as we enter into the 17-18 calendar next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would if you just, since you're at the microphone, do you just want to talk a little bit about who's on the, so the public sometimes ask me or ask others, you know, who really makes these decisions? So when you talk about the Calendar Committee, who, what, who are we talking about?
So the Calendar Committee is a collaborative committee process where we have members of the administration, representatives from the Teaching and Learning Department, our Assistant Superintendent of TLA, our Professional Development Coordinator, myself. We have Annie Dickerson from our Communications Department, and then we have representation from our Teachers Association, the PNEA. And the representatives from the PNEA are across all grade levels and I'm sure content areas as well. So when the proposed calendar is drafted and we have a discussion, there is discussion around families, and there's a discussion around the curriculum, and when is it best to have breaks? And we know that we're not going to meet the needs of everyone, but what we try to do is come up with an academic calendar that will best meet the majority of needs that, for the audiences that we serve. And we also have within our PNEA and Board of Education Agreement, specific things that we have to have within our contract, and that relates to the number of workdays, records days, and so we have to make sure that we build those days in as well.
Also, Amy, just so that the public knows, can you talk about the balancing of the semesters and the desirable dates to finish first semester and second semester?
I can try. This is my first district that has trimesters, and I can tell you, this is where Julie Pepper and myself worked collaboratively to establish those guidelines. But I know that they try to evenly distribute the trimesters with an even break at the end of December. And so what, and it is, it is kind of a balancing act in working backward from May up through January and then December up through August. And then we have to find natural breaks for those trimesters, and then the mid-trimester reports to communicate with parents what those mid-trimester grades are.
And it's always been important to our parents that high school and I guess middle school finals take place before winter break, so that the students can really enjoy their vacation without having the burden of facing finals when they get back to school. And then I think it's also been really important to our families that we finish school prior to the Memorial Day holiday, if at all possible.
Yes, and I think that is an interest of our teaching staff as well.
So I think we're really fortunate that we're able to do that. So, okay. Can we now have a motion and a second to approve 11.11?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go too far. We're looking at four policies at this meeting that we will, will be placed for approval at the next board meeting. The policies are retirement benefit administrators. Does anybody have any questions? The Affordable Care Act policy, assessment policy, the Character Education policy. Okay, so we will, we will study those hard, and they will be up for approval at March 11th. And now, we're going to get to the reports. 14.01, Amy Joyce, Director of Human Resources, and Liz Morrison, Coordinator, I don't see Liz. Where's Liz? Oh, she's hiding, hiding behind the podium. Okay, going to talk to us about Goal Five, Recruit, Employ, and Development. And we're looking forward to what you have to tell us.
Is it all good? Okay.
Good evening, President Feldman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, and Mrs. Stover. This evening, Liz Morrison and I will present to you a progress update on Goal Five. Goal Five states, "The district will recruit, employ, develop, and retain an exceptional staff dedicated to and representative of Parkway's diverse community." There are four measurable objectives which we will focus on this evening. Measurable Objective One, one's target is that every classroom teacher will be, every classroom, I'm sorry, will be staffed with an effective teacher as measured by Parkway's Teacher Evaluation Model. The Teacher Evaluation Model has four areas in which teachers can be rated: ineffective, developing, effective, and exemplary. As you can see, Parkway teachers have a combined percentage of 98.54% in the exemplary and effective areas. Support is put in place to assist teachers who are in the other two categories to ensure professional growth and development in their craft and to support student learning. Measurable Objective Two's targets state that all employees will be effective in their role as measured by Parkway's evaluation model. In the 13-14 school year, the district worked toward an online operations evaluation system. This system is currently being implemented in the 14-15 school year, and progress measures toward Goal Two will be reported. So we will be able to electronically poll the performance evaluations of all of our operations staff, and we will then have our baseline data to show growth each year. Measurable Objective Three's targets indicate that the diversity of our teachers, administrators, and supervisors will mirror that of our students. I think I went way back. There we go. As you can see on the following chart, the district can
As you can see on the following chart, the district continues to have a gap between the percentage of students of color versus educators in the school district. While recruitment of minority staff is a focus, as you can see on this next slide, we have a lot of work to do in order to meet this goal. And I apologize, my glasses are, my glasses broke, so I'm kind of going back and forth. Intentional efforts have been made to attract minority candidates to Parkway's Recruitment Fair, which was held in January. As you can see, the number of candidates of color coming to the fair has increased. Data for the two thousand thirteen school year unfortunately was not available for this This slide shows some historical information about Parkway's Recruitment Fair and the success of recommending candidates of color for teaching positions since two thousand eleven. We are excited about our future work on Goal Five. While we will continue to recruit candidates of color by attending recruitment fairs, visiting universities, and networking, the most exciting initiative is in the Parkway's Grow Your Own Teacher Program. We are in the infancy stages of developing a program that will identify Parkway's students of color to participate in a Grow Your Own Teacher Program. We feel it's a strategic way to identify our future leaders in our school district. With Parkway's diverse student population, it only makes sense to develop a Grow Your Own Program. We will be working closely with our new Teaching and Learning Director to develop and then implement this exciting program. Now, we would like to turn the presentation over to Liz Morrison, who will speak to measurable Objective Four.
Thanks, Amy.
Sure. Do you need my glasses?
I know. Yeah, that's great, thanks. I know that you're going to be sad, I did not bring any pick-a-sticks today. So, Measure Objective Four is that all teachers have engaged, all, I'm sorry, all staff members engage in effective professional learning that's towards our diverse student populations, they achieve more. So, what we've done so far with our certified staff, and the first one, Technology Tuesday, we're going to be implementing this, this summer based on teacher feedback. So, every Tuesday, we're going to be offering technology courses based on what teachers said that they wanted to have us offer. And I work with Tom Sawoda and Bill Bass on that. So, we really have been recruiting teachers to lead our teachers in that development. So, we're really pumped about that. The Google Academy is kind of an, one more step up from the Google Camp where we're going to be having teacher leaders, it's like a conference setup, and we'll be having teacher leaders teaching other teachers on, on things that they've learned about Google this school year that they want to share. We have the Pinterest boards with their line with the evaluations, so if people need assistance, they can go there like Amy was talking about with those in developing, or just people who want to, you know, move from exempt, uh, effective to exemplary. We're starting to try Google Hangout as a way for our MSPLCs to meet. They've been, there's been some problems with the drive time, they feel like they're wasting time driving. So, last week, um, with Jennifer Stanfield's group, we met via Google Hangouts, and it was really cool to have, see how that worked for our teachers. Um, so, we're going to be teaching that over the summer as well. We're trying Twitter learning, both Platt and the Assistant Principals went through learning how to do Twitter book talks so you could do work at night from home. Um, still without learning going on, but very convenient for our teachers, so we're working on that. Engagement strategies are huge. Um, as you know, this summer, thank you very much, we will have the Institute where we are Equity and Excellence through Cooperative Learning Strategies to Engage All Kids. We're going to have lots of coordinator workshops and institutes this summer, also based on what teachers say that they would like. New educator induction, we've increased the time for that based on what principals have said is lacking. One thing we've noticed with our new teachers is classroom management. It's been a challenge, and we're adding a new day back on classroom management. We're going to look at all those pieces that go, and we think that's going to be a really great bonus. Social justice, um, continues to be a part, and Chelsea's team leads that. Um, and then, of course, the Character Education Conference. So, those are just kind of an overview of all the things we have up and coming for our certified staff. One thing I wanted to point out is our policy about the three and three. What makes this policy really powerful is it ensures that all of our staff members continue to engage in professional learning. And this has been very, very, I'm not sure if it's popular, but in a learning institute like ours, it's really great that people continue to learn, and we appreciate that this policy is in place, so we can continue that to ensure all of our teachers and certified staff members keep up to date in the latest practices. So, we have, um, for our administrators, we've really expanded the learning of our administrators this year. Desi has done an outstanding job with the principal meetings and the AP meetings, making sure that we have that development happening at all of those meetings. Um, we've been sending our administrators to national conferences, we've been really working hard with our Assistant Principals, trying to make sure that we have Assistant Principals ready to step up to the principal position with that idea that we want to ensure that they stay with us. New administrator development, we've worked on that as a team and upping that a little bit. And we also have, which is instituted by Desi, where the PLCs by area for our administrators, which has been really successful. So, it's area for, um, elementary, and then there's the high school and the middle school PLCs for administrators, which has been very, very effective. On the operations side, this has been great, um, we've, uh, kind of upped that as well. Amy did an outstanding presentation with the Operations Action Team, which is the one that Patty leads, and we learned about our strengths. And do you want to talk to that for just a sec? Keep going? Okay. All right. Keep talking. All right. Then we've been doing, uh, lots of work with, um, the data dashboard for our operations side. We had this, start with the Y book study that we're doing with our operations administrators, um, managers. And, um, we've, Amy did a really neat thing with customer service surveys that we're looking at adding to all of our emails, so we can just kind of get immediate feedback from the operations side about how we're doing. So, that's what we're happening on the, the leadership side. So, for operations in general, and this was new to my job two years ago, um, we have Operations Action Team Development, which is the, the Oat Group. Um, we have the Operations Conference, which Beck and Keith were at this year, and Chris, did you come to Operations this year? I can't remember. Yeah. So, that can-
I think last year he came this year.
Okay, cool. Thanks, sorry. Uh, which has been very popular, and it seems to be getting, um, better each year. Um, we did a pilot with our operations staff on a thing called Lynda.com. It's a lot of online learning opportunities. So, we got, through Jennifer Stanfield, we got an opportunity to try this out, and, um, we piloted it, and you guys will be happy to know that we found that it wasn't very effective, so we're not getting it. But I think that the operations staff felt like that helped them connect, and they gave a lot of great feedback if this was development that they thought that they would need. All of the peers will be, the evaluations will be on peers. We also keep track of all of the development for operations on peers as well. And we're expanding the online learning through the Technology Department, and I think Sandy Spawnhorse kind of gears that up, so we're adding some more online learning for all of our operations. So, when Amy and I were planning this out, we thought, let's talk about, we offer for everybody, both certified and non-certified. And so, um, aspiring administrator is something that we do for our, um, teachers who would like to be administrators. And that's run by Lisa Meredith, and I help her out with that. And then, we started adding one then for our, um, non, our operations side, which is preparing for promotion in Parkway. And this came about because Orlando Lewis, that's right. I keep wanting to call him Orlando Bloom, and I know that's not right. So, Orlando Lewis, um, from our, um, supervisor, has been helping me plan for this for next year, for, um, so we were going to be taking our people who are interested in promotion, but they really have, don't have the skills, they don't know how to do a resume, they don't know how their cover letter, they don't know how to interview, they're not even sure what it means to be a manager. So, we're going to try to do that build-your-own kind of program in, on that site as well. Um, we've done interest inventories from both sides to find out what people want, and we are offering those courses, um, for both certified and operations on what they say that they would like and need. Um, our late start day learning has really expanded this past year. Of course, you know, we have the PLCs for our teachers. We also have development for our TAs. We have a Google Camp kind of thing for our operations staff secretaries who couldn't attend over the summer. So, we have Google offerings done by Jen Holtman and the Technology Department. And then we also have budget development going on as well from our Budget Department as well. So, that's kind of what we have going for everybody on those late start days. Um, next time for TA training is going to be very awesome. It's, um, working with children with autism, and that's been something that people have been interested in having, so I think that's going to be a really great class for our teaching assistants. We are busy.
Do we even breathe?
No, that whole time. I'm feeling better now. And so, we're at the point, do you have any questions? They're overwhelmed.
You guys are amazing.
Liz, I, I, I just can't help but think that one of the things, when, when Amy talks about growing our own in terms of, you know, uh, growing our own potential teachers, it's almost that philosophy in staff development, our professional development, right? It seems like we're doing a lot of things to help people maybe grow into different jobs in the district, we're helping people grow in terms of technology development. I just get a sense that that's, that's kind of a, in, in terms of your role over the years, is, is that a fair, fair assessment?
Yeah, and it's really expanded that whole idea of how do we get people to stay? How do we get people to keep here? So, yeah.
Yeah. Good, good. I, I think, uh, you know, I think you'd have to be, uh, you have to go quite a ways to find a, a school district that I think has this comprehensive of program. And so, I give Liz and, and Amy and a lot of other people who work in this area a lot of credit because, you know, if we want, want to have a learning organization where kids are really getting, uh, you know, the best, we got to have, make sure our teachers in. And going back to your question earlier, Debbie, on the, on the calendar, I mean, I think, you know, Amy said, we, we really got to think about our development, meaningful development. PLCs do that, but we also have to have times where we can really get depth in, in, in learning, and, uh, we could do that after hours, but sometimes we just got to do it on days where people are really, we can cross-reference people from different buildings, and so, it's kind of a balance, but we, I think we got to think about our staff growing them as well.
Have you, this is, goes back to your question about diversity, uh, in your report there, and I compliment you that we seem to be increasing, at least in getting our message out. Hopefully, that will lead to more hires. Have you identified some universities that really have a education program that, that caters to and helps, uh, diversity students so that those teachers are available?
Chris, it's a very interesting question. Universities are struggling as well to have candidates of color go into the education program. Um, we've looked at some data across Missouri schools, and, um, overall, the percentage of candidates of color is very small. So, there isn't, there are a few universities, uh, in the state of Missouri that are doing better than others, but on a consistent basis, we're, we're still searching, and, um, we look at out, out-of-state as well, but there are challenges attracting folks to a different state just because of home and family. Um, so, I know universities are interested in partnering with us with our Grow Your Own Teacher Program as well to kind of talk about how can we identify and then help support through that whole college experience and then come back to that school. So, this is, it, it is a regional state issue that we are trying to address.
Districts like Jennings and Hazelwood and Ferg, uh, maybe even the city of St. Louis, are these people coming back because they're from that area?
Yes. And we did, yes, I do have some comparison data of other school districts and their, um, teachers of color versus their, their student population, and there are school districts that are closing, they're closing that gap. What we find is that folks go to school districts in which they are familiar with, where they graduated from, and it's a challenge sometimes to bring somebody out of their own community because they want to give back to their community. And that's what we find in Parkway, that our graduates want to come back and serve Parkway, and other school districts grad, graduates want to do the same thing. So, um, we, we just have to find a systematic approach and encourage at a very young age to go into the teaching profession, and there needs to be more opportunities for scholarships, for support, for alternative routes into education.
Maybe some, uh, advertising media type stuff too, to let some of those candidates out there, I mean, some innovating, maybe put it in Sports Illustrated or something.
A lot of it is, is networking, networking and, and talking and, and letting people know about, about Parkway.
And you did really reach out, um, in a really thoughtful way this year for the Recruitment Con, Recruitment Day, um, because we could tell that the numbers were up, and I really appreciate that. I know it's, it's hard work, and it can sometimes be frustrating to put so much work into something and really not see the, not see it come to fruition. But with this goal in mind, um, I think developing a program in-house, even though it's years away from, from helping us with our problem, I think it's definitely a very smart way to pursue, um, this goal. So, thank you for that. And Liz, when I first got on the school board six and a half years ago, our Professional Development Program wasn't anything near what it is today, and I think we owe a lot of that to you, and especially since you've taken over operations. I think it's certainly much more fun, if nothing else. But, I mean, the, the wide expanse of the things that you offer is really incredible, and, you know, for a district our size, we're, we're fortunate that we're able to offer so many different kinds of learning experiences for our staff. Smaller districts aren't, you know, they're just not able to spread their wings that wide. So, but we're lucky that we have you to keep up with it all.
We just wish we could get a little, a little more enthused.
Yeah. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Here it is. Okay, next, we are going to call Kevin Beckner, Coordinator of Student Assessment, and Patty Bedborough, our CFO, to talk about the possible utilization of our Fifi Road property endeavor.
Thank you very much, President Feldman, Vice President Jacob, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about the potential for this building on Fifi Road and how it might help Parkway students. Here's a picture of this building that came available. Uh, it was an old kinder care building, that kinder care has since closed that location and merged with another facility. Here's the aerial picture, and what has made us interested in this conversation around this building is obviously its, its location, that it's adjacent to our current North High campus and does share a boundary line with North High. So, there were, in the discussions around this, there were many conversations about potential utilization. How could this building be used? What, what would be the right things for our district? So, there was talk about experiential learning. As we've been increasing experiential learning, is there an opportunity there? What might that look like? There was also talk of using it for North High. We know that there are needs at North High, and could it be a, a useful facility for expanding some of their programming? But there was also conversation around early childhood, and what would that look like? How might we use that? And looking at the facility in its current form, as well as many of the programs that we have going on in Parkway and their current state of affairs, it was determined that the best fit at this time was for early childhood expansion. To get background on how we got to that point, there was a preschool program evaluation way back in ten eleven that set the course for Parkway preschool. Even that program evaluation is influencing the work that's happening in preschool now. A couple of years later, we engaged in the Early Childhood Market Study, where we had an outside group give us lots of information about the state of early childhood education in our area, what's the competitive balance look like, what does the market look like around early childhood? And out of that study, they came back to us and said, "We have several questions for Parkway. Given all of this information, uh, what does Parkway want to do? Does Parkway want to become a competitor with other potential early childhood service providers, or does Parkway want to partner with those, or some blend of those?" And so, building on top of that market study, we then, uh, had the Early Childhood Steering Committee, which is why I'm here talking to you, because I have the pleasure of working with the Early Childhood Steering Committee. Then, that group developed this goal, and I know it is a long one, but the second half of this basically says that we want to support Parkway's community in making sure that all of our families in our community benefit from high-quality, developmentally-appropriate early childhood programming, ultimately so that we can meet our mission. To do that, we identified four strategies. The first one was to increase our partnerships with our private providers in our area. We know that many of our families who come to our kindergarten and come to our elementary schools come to us from private programs, so increase our partnership with those programs. The second strategy, reduce financial barriers. We know there are some families who don't come to Parkway's early childhood programming because of the financial burden that sometimes can be there. The third one is really to strategically locate opportunities. We have many opportunities for early childhood right now at our Clayton Road Early Childhood Center that unfortunately is not accessible to all families just because of potential distance or travel concerns, so increase and strategically locate those opportunities, and then really market, amplify the awareness. How do we make sure that our Parkway families, but also the public at large, understand how important early childhood education is to laying the foundation for the rest of their educational career? We've had some new developments in the last couple of years, even since that group met. Uh, one, as you mentioned, that kinder care closed. Along with that, they, the market study had identified that there was actually an oversaturation of preschools in the north area with the kinder care center closing that reduced some of that oversaturation in the north area. Also, thanks to the work of Dr. Tyson, looking at our census data and live birth data, we actually can see that there is projected to be an increase in the number of preschoolers in the north area beginning in two thousand seventeen, particularly around McKelvey and in the north area, seeing an increase coming in a couple of years of the number of preschoolers. Additionally, we've had a need for more accessible north area preschool classrooms, whether that be our students or our families who need accessible classrooms in order- that be our students or our families who need accessible classrooms in order to really become integrally involved in their child's education. For example, this year, we had to create a new classroom at the Instructional Services Center and move it out of the preschool area into a place where it could be accessible to those who needed to get to that classroom. We also know that we've had increased programming for students with disabilities in the north area. This facility could provide us the opportunity to increase the accessibility and make sure that we are meeting the needs of children who need that kind of programming. We also know that there's a potential north area development in the works just north of Riverbend Elementary that could also increase the amount of children in that area. And we know that then, given all those things, this location became available adjacent to North High. So how we might use that would be as a mini-center where we have our Early Childhood Center still on Clayton Road, having this be a mini-center in the north area where we could potentially house two full-day preschool classrooms. We could house one or two half-day preschool classrooms. We have parent-child interaction programs in the north area. Currently, those are only offered at the Early Childhood Center on Clayton Road. We could also have kids morning out programs in the north area, again, going along with that strategy of strategically locating our opportunities for parents and children to have access to early childhood programs. Additionally, we could offer screenings in the north area for families that might need screening around special education or special needs. Currently, again, they have to go to the Clayton Road location. There's a potential for expanding our summer opportunities and even having year-round preschool potentially at this site. Additionally, we talked earlier just about North High and the potential for the use of the facility there. This could also be a place where some of the classes, where we have students already engaged in either teaching classes or in some of the Family and Consumer Science classes, actually have experiential learning opportunities at that location should we have early childhood services available there. Some future considerations and things we'll need to think about going forward, we need to continue matching parent interest to availability, just making sure that if, let's say, we have a facility that is currently full, but we have parents say, I'm interested, we create a waiting list, how do we connect with them if we then have an opening? Just making sure that we're trying to stay full and be financially responsible in that way. We have the possible future design of staffing models. For example, with summer programming, how could we get creative with that summer program and potentially have maybe TAs helping teach classes during the summertime? Or how could we think differently about staffing a year-round early childhood program in that building? And how can we further strengthen that preschool-toelementary collaboration, from preschool to kindergarten, and make that an even stronger transition? So those are things with early childhood that we'll have to keep coming back to in the future. With that, I know there's lots of questions about the finances, so I'm going to let Patty talk about those.
Thank you. So first, before we would move into the facility, we would have some startup costs for the facility to get it ready for children. We estimate that that will be about $121,000. That includes repairs to the HVAC, some piping, some roof repairs, but also it includes the replacement of one of the playgrounds, a smaller playground blinds, the drop ceiling, the ceiling tiles need to be repaired, and then some carpeting, flooring, and office renovations. So our facilities department has gone in there multiple times to do some inspections, some estimations of the cost of repairs, and we have come up with a figure of $121,000. That also includes providing data, so internet access to that building also. And then we have classroom setup fees of $44,000. So that would include toys and desks, chairs, et cetera, for each of the four classrooms. Now, some of these costs will be covered in the lease and paid by the owner, so the HVAC, the piping, and the roof painting. And some of these costs will be able to offset from some of their existing budget that the early childhood has in their program budget. When we look, when we look at the classroom setup as we have designed, so without a summer school program yet, because we haven't fully developed what that will look at, look like as far as staffing and where the price points are for the tuition. So just looking at the regular school year, having two full-day programs and having two partial-day programs, we have revenues with the tuition of $532,000, the salaries and benefits, so that's with certified teachers and with teacher's assistants, of the $478,000. We believe that secretarial staff could be shared with the existing staff at the Early Childhood Center on Clayton Road, so no additional costs with that. Supplies, $107,000, and that also includes in there the rent for the facility and the startup costs of the $165, so the $121 for the startup cost for the facilities, along with the $44,000 for the classroom startup fees. That's a net first-year revenue or expenditure overall of $218,000. Now, this is without any type of grant funding. So what is our funding support? We know with offering two full-day classrooms, that would be new classrooms. We could have the ability to apply for the Missouri Preschool Project Grants. Those would be available to apply in the April-May timeframe. We'd be awarded those classrooms in August, and the classrooms would be ready for attendance essentially by October. Those grants are essentially $80,000 currently per classroom. If we received funding only for one classroom, we would only open up one classroom at a time, because if we opened both but only awarded one grant, you can't apply for the grant for that opened classroom that following year. So we don't want to miss that opportunity of some special funding. We would also utilize our services of Denise and seek out other grants or scholarships in order to offset some of the tuition costs of the lower-income students. When we looked at this, we projected our costs on what we thought were worst-case scenarios, so including a full array of all the costs, and we didn't consider how much the owner was going to pay versus us. So it was an all-conclusive cost of those startup costs. The first-year costs were actually very, especially if we are awarded the MPP grant, so that would be offset by those revenues that we receive for that grant. And the classrooms, we will only add as our enrollment supports adding that staffing. So if we only have 18 students for a full-day class and 18 students for a half-day class, those are the only sections that we would add. So we would definitely have a very conscientious marketing program that would go out in order to ensure that we would have as much enrollment there as possible. And we have ongoing conversations with SSD to possibly place some early childhood special education classrooms there also. Our current preschool is budgeted at a loss currently of $375,000 a year, so adding this would actually increase that by the $218,000 for the first year. The additional summer school programs, we hope to establish that would help to offset some of these losses, so to actually be a bit of a revenue generator for the district. And we would emphasize that ongoing marketing in order to fill these slots and also to continually fill slots as children may move in and out of the programs. Our second year will most likely be less of an operating loss, but still at an operating loss. And we're looking at that preschool class sizes over our entire program that to possibly increase those class sizes too and stay within our licensing structure. And of course, marketing will be a key. So two items that we believe are essential questions for the board to consider is, you know, are early childhood programs a benefit to the K-12 success for the school district in a whole? And the other question essentially is, we need to consider that overall investment in preschool education, which is an expenditure, an additional expenditure added to the budget, but compare that to the investment in the overall education of that child, so an investment in their success in the K-12 realm. So what are our next steps? We are currently in lease negotiations. We presume that the lease agreement will be presented at the March Board Meeting. If that is approved by the board, then we will move forward with our facilities and planning. We will apply for the MPP grants, which will take place in the April and May timeframes, and of course, we will begin our aggressive marketing campaign. Any questions?
Might you go back to those two essential questions? I think that probably is where the, we'd like to hear the board saying.
Thank you Patty and Kevin. One thing that you didn't discuss, I don't think, was who was going to manage the facility?
The facility would be managed by the new early childhood director. As you all know from your board packet, that Jean Manning, our current early childhood director, has requested retirement. So one of the first things that Dr. Meredith will pursue, I'm sure when she returns from vacation, is filling that job. And that person, along with her existing early childhood staff, which includes Margaret, et cetera, you know, will be essentially in charge of managing not only the site of the Early Childhood Center on Clayton Road, but the entire early childhood programming, which of course encompasses many campuses.
What's the likelihood Patty, that an MPP grant wouldn't be awarded? Is it, is it pretty likely that we would, I mean, that, I guess, can we count on those funds or is there, what works against us there?
In the past, most people that have filled out the application, I'm under the understanding that most have been awarded. But it all depends on the size of the budget that the State Department has to work with as far as then what is the size of the actual grants that are awarded. Am I correct in that statement?
And then how many are applying, right? How many requests?
Correct, so it depends on how many apply in that one year. I believe this last year there were...
Ten?
I think there was around 10 that were awarded and provided, and that amount that they received in that first-year funding was $80,000 per classroom.
And the funding goes over two years, right?
The funding, I believe, was over four years, and it's reduced by 20% each year.
You want to come up to the microphone so that people at home can hear you?
This is, this is Margaret, I don't know if everybody knows Margaret?
So right now, we're in our 15th renewal contract for the MPP grants that we currently have. So while it might be four years, it could be extended and as ours have been to our current year 15. So it's hard to answer.
Thank you. I didn't know that.
Could you or Kevin talk a little bit about the marketing plan and how that'll take place?
Sure, in part, those specifics will have to be developed once we identify whether we're going to move forward. Obviously, we can't move forward without your approval until we're at that point. But some things that we know will have to take place is identify who your target market is, identify where they are, identify the best methods to reach them. We've already been, I shouldn't say we, because I haven't been in it, but I know there's been a group, I'm buzzing, very popular. Thank you. I know there's already been a group that's really been working with how we, you know, along with our partnerships, how do we make sure that we get the word out about all the different programs that we have available? And doing that through many different means. In fact, I know Jason Rooks was at tonight, I don't know if he's shown up, but he was actually at one of our private providers tonight, talking about internet safety. So we've already been trying to just get the word out about, here's all the things going on in Parkway, here's all the things that we're doing, and really increasing our, how we make ourselves visible, I don't know what the word is, but how we make ourselves visible, how we make our programming known. But in terms of what the very specifics are, I think what we would have to look at is, in this area, how do we reach people? Where are they going? What are the opportunities we need to reach there? And there'd be a team dedicated to identifying just those things.
Thank you. All honestly, we know we can do a better job. You know, I think, we have a great story to tell. I mean, we really do, and I think we could really enhance that whole effort to market. But we've had some initial discussion, but we think we can do a lot, a lot more.
We also feel with having a year-round opportunity that we will attract additional families that currently we kind of are off their radar screen because we're only school year and they'd have to find a second option for the summer months. So with expanding the program, we think we actually may open up a whole nother sector of availability. Plus with 364 expansion going out to St. Charles County, we may become attractive with this location in particular too for parents and households that actually are outside of our district that are employed close to our district.
Now, will there be aftercare?
Yes, this would be essentially open from 7:00 AM till 6:30? Till 6:00 PM. So in the full-day classrooms, that would be staffed with a combination of teacher full-time, full-time teacher assistant, and then a part-time teacher assistant that would also take that extended care into place.
Patty or Kevin, I'm not sure which one of you can answer this question, but I know we talked about it, is who's going to take care of the children's health needs?
We believe that the children's health needs could be shared with the existing nursing staff that is on staff at ISC, and if it is an absolute emergency, then we have the nursing staff that's at North High that could come over. So whichever one in an emergency could be there immediately. If it becomes a center that has early childhood special ed and there is a child that has special medical needs, then a nurse would be on staff and paid for by special school district.
Great, thank you.
What are the ages of the students that are going to be at this location?
Three, three to five essentially.
Okay. Has there been any discussion about how the Parents as Teachers program may be incorporated with this? Is there any anticipation that that could expand as a result of adding this particular center here?
Absolutely. So it becomes one more location for screenings and even especially weekend events for Parents as Teacher, and it's available now in the north area versus everything being centered on the Clayton Road. So some of it during the day depends on how fast the classrooms for preschool would fill, so that would be our first initiative. But if only part of the half-day programs fill, then we may have open slots that we could fill in with the Mom's Day Out and special events with the Parents as Teachers programming.
The Parent-Child Interaction Program.
Correct.
Right? Yeah.
Yes.
I think when you think about Parents as Teachers, which is a great program, and Lisa's here tonight, I mean, there's great opportunity to market that more as well and market the whole program. So I think you're on to the whole program piece, again, which we have a great story to tell.
All right. Any other questions? I thank you both very much for all of your hard work on this.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, Lisa and Meredith's not here tonight, but Lisa has also been key, and I know if she were here, she would, might conclude by saying this is, this has been pretty thorough. I mean, I think we've looked at the pros and cons. I think there's a kind of the assumption here that in the end, we have a great opportunity with the property. But more than that, I think we've laid the groundwork with the study and the task force. I told some folks today that I think, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I get a sense even among some politicians that have not been excited about early childhood nationally and in the state, and maybe in the future presidential election, I think, I think more and more people realizing the value of early childhood. And if we're really serious about closing an achievement gap, which we want, we talk about a lot, this may be our best program to do that. Because when you think about it, if children come to kindergarten with some of their health needs, you know, some of their emotional needs, learning needs already addressed, because that would be part of the efforts here, I think that would go a long way to getting kids off to a great start. And it may even save some costs later on for us remediating and getting people caught up. So I know that, you know, there's, this is a lot of controversy out there about, you know, what's the role of a school, district in early childhood? But if you think about our big mission, I think overall, I think we really have some responsibility to look at this, and it's a great opportunity. It is a cost, and we're assuming, you know, assuming that, but overall, I think it's, you know, Parkway could be a real leader and we could really set the stage, I think, for the future where I think we could get a head start on one I think is going to come our way.
Patty, I have one more question. Patty, I have one more question before you sit down, and that is, you mentioned with 364 expanding, people coming towards Parkway to work. So, what you're saying is, is that people wouldn't necessarily need to be residents of our district to take advantage of the program?
Correct.
So, that's great.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 16.0, call for special meeting. There is none. 17.0, next scheduled closed session is anticipated to be held on March 11, 2014 at 6:00 p.m. at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 18.0, recess. 19.0, closed session. We will be returning to closed session. And may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Don't move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we will reconvene our closed meeting. Thank you all for coming.